I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to tonight's board meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval admitted shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. If we have any visitors tonight, we can go through kind of the guidelines when it comes. So with that being said, Carol, would you mind doing roll call for us?
Aiden Warner. Mr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mrs. Yonker Davis?
Here.
Mr. Scobell?
Here.
Mr. Grill?
Here.
Mr. Zelo?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Tonight, we have four presentations, and we're gonna start off with honoring a guy that is in rare air. Mr. Schleggenau, if you could come on up here. The Board would like to present to you, and maybe we can come around the other side here instead of reaching across the table. No, I'm gonna try not to. An award for a pretty amazing accomplishment. You've reached that 400-win plateau, which I can honestly say I can't believe that you've made it here. I was just talking to Mr. Fiskus, and I'm trying to remember what exactly. Was it ninety-two or ninety-three that you?
Ninety-one, ninety-two school year.
Okay, so I wasn't that far off, and I wasn't in fourth grade when I was there. This is an absolute honor, and the Board will recognize the amount of work that you've put into our girls' program and how many girls' lives you've touched in half a period of time. So we'd like to thank you for this and always representing our school to the best of your ability.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the first presentation for tonight is coming from the Haxton Library, and we've got Carol Dielva and Lynette Crawford here to talk about where the Haxton Library is and where it would like to be in the very near future. So welcome, ladies.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for putting this on the agenda. We appreciate it. I am currently serving as the president of the Board of Trustees at the Haxton Library, and we're here to, Lynette and I are here to formally announce the Haxton Library's plan to recharter from a public library to a school district library. And we wanted to clarify what that really means, because it sounds like it means something that it doesn't. It sounds as if there's going to be some kind of affiliation with the school under that name, but that is not true. All it means is that we will be serving the community of the Oakfield School District. So that includes some taxpayers that we currently don't have at this time. And really, the reason that we're doing that is to stabilize our funding. So it means no changes, just that the school will be now collecting our tax dollars if the proposition passes in May, and then funneling that to the library. So there is quite a process to go through. We've been working on this for, I don't know, maybe eight months or so. And we won't get our recharter, even if it passes in May, we won't get the recharter until the end of 2023 November. At the earliest, it could be December, because it has to go through several channels: the Board of Regents, the Library Development Board, and all kinds of things. But really, again, it has nothing to do with this body. We hope to have a really great working partnership with school, but we will function completely independently of school. So just like you have the Genesee County, you want to talk about that a little bit? Just like you're gonna have Genesee County collect the taxes, right? Isn't that what you said?
Well, we'd be, we'd have, you know, the taxes would go through you. Well, our Board will approve a tax levy that would go on as a proposition for the voters to approve. It'd be a separate proposition. It'd also be a proposition for, to vote for the trustees of the Board too, because now we'll have to be voted on members of the trustees of the library. So, but then we would use the mechanism that you guys use that would go on the Oakfield School District tax bill as a separate line item on the tax bill that would show for the library. And then, you know, with your taxing mechanism, the collect of taxes would be the same for us. And then, once it gets approved through, like what Carol said, it's gotta go through the library, Department of Library, you know, that goes to them hopefully by July. If we don't get everything to them by July, or they don't read on it in July, they don't meet in August, so then it wouldn't get done until September, then it's gotta go to the Board of Regents for approval. So that's where that process could take. So it might not even get to the Board of Regents for approval until October. And we can't, even though you guys would start collecting it, if it does get approved from the voters and you guys start collecting it on the tax bill, we can't, you can't even fund any of it to us until we reach that approval with the Regents Board.
I think it's important to note, I know this is, you know, for everyone here, that our funding has been cut significantly over the last few years, and so really, this is the only way to keep the Haxton doors open. And this isn't something new. We're one of the last libraries, actually, to be doing this. This is encouraged by the New York Board of Regents and the state to be rechartering like this, so that, you know, again, so that we can stabilize things and have a Board of Trustees that is voted on by the public. So, is there any questions that we can answer for you?
So just a little more clarity, Carol. Right now, currently, this is coming out, so it's being funded through the town, correct?
Correct.
And you would see that tax on our town taxes.
Correct.
And then that would, it would shift?
It would shift. Right. Anybody that lives in the village or town of Oakfield now see that on our town tax bill, our county tax bill, as a separate line item.
But it would be?
So now it won't be on that tax bill anymore as a separate line item. It'll come onto the schools.
Right.
But what Carol was referring to is what would be different is like town of Alabama. Town of Alabama does give $5,000 of funding to the library now. It's not a line item on their tax bill. So like town of Alabama residents will now see that line item on the school bill for the library. Town of Batavia residents that are in the Oakfield School District, they'll now see it. But they won't, they don't get, you know, because the library in Batavia, that's on the Batavia City Schools' tax roll. So anybody that's in the town of Batavia is not going to get taxed on two libraries. Okay? There, I know in, on our tax roll, there's one or two properties in Runedine, I think, so that'll be new on their tax bill. So there's certain communities that haven't seen it as a separate line item, but none of those communities now that will start to see it on the school district tax bill don't have enough, aren't getting a charge from a different district for that, for a lot of library charge.
And that would be the stabilizing factor, right? Because currently, the budget has dropped considerably.
Significantly, yeah. Right. We're barely keeping the doors open. Before COVID, I mean, I'm just, I'm new to the library board. It just came out in July. I agree with what you're saying. You were getting like around 115 or 120 from the town, and now we're down to eighty.
Hundred twenty-three, I think we were getting.
Yeah, so you're up over, we were, before the pandemic, we were getting over 123 from the town, and that's what was going on in that tax bill as a separate line item. And now they're only getting 80,000 funding.
And that's not a shame on the town. That's a reduction across the board through all, for all different things. So.
Correct.
It's something that we need to consider and make sure that we're not just associated with our school district. This is completely separate. It's just the mechanism.
It's separate, just the mechanism.
Right.
And the message has to be out there. I mean, obviously, we want to work with the school district too. I mean, it's a joint process. I mean, the library supports so many of, you know, our students and everything else. And I mean, this is going into the Board for the library. I'm amazed at the programs that they're doing. I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and I used it, my kids used it, but you know, now that I don't have little children, I forget all the programs they're doing in the adult programs. I mean, they're doing a lot of things down at that library that are really great for our community.
Just to finish up while we have this, well, this is being broadcast, as I understand, right? We want to tell everyone, like, this library is, other libraries can't believe the volume that we do at our library, to be honest with you. And it's becoming more of a community center than a library. Like, we're really branching out in a lot of different ways. So it's not just a place to get books anymore. I mean, you know, this is a place where people go to do arts and crafts. They do, you know, there's all kinds of things going on at that place.
Well, look at the programs they brought this summer. I mean, there were a lot of GoArt funding programs. We did this summer too.
Okay. Any questions?
How many districts are left in Genesee County that are libraries that are not part of a district?
In Genesee County?
Isn't it just Virgin?
I think it's just Virgin, and they are working on a recharter now. So I'm pretty sure that's the only one in Genesee County.
And recently, other?
Corfie just did it. Yeah.
Okay.
Alexander. We're all on it recently.
So would this then give you guys the ability, you guys will set your own budget?
Yes.
And then that would come out. So I guess one of my questions is when somebody gets their school bill, I know, understand it's a separate line item, but how easily are people gonna look at that and say, oh, it's my school taxes are going up? And like, how clear is that?
I think it's all gonna be the messaging that we work on, you know, developing that message, right? I mean, because you don't wanna, you know, when they cut, when we have the public meeting for the school district vote, that those questions are gonna come up, you know? So we're gonna be, we've gone out and met with the town of Alabama and got the message in there. Because I mean, it's all the stakeholders, you guys, town of Alabama, town of Oakfield, the village of Oakfield, and all the stakeholders that could help get that right message out there, that it's not, you know, that this was, I mean, if you look at your town of Oakfield, your county bill, you'll see it as a line item. So it's that kind of messaging that we need to make sure that they realize, which has taken it from here and sent it to here.
We have a campaign manager that was hired and with help from Nioga and some other places, right? And that, we will be doing a public mailing, two times, I believe, by law through our attorney, that will spread that messaging to everyone in the district. So, you know, whoever your mailings go to, that's, we will be using that to send that message and clarify that.
There's gonna be certain things we have to follow too, like we have to have that message out to the campaigns that have to get, yeah, just like a school does.
So that will, that budget then be voted on by the public each year as well?
No. Only when we raise it. And so we have been advised, you know, to go out with a fair budget that will sustain us for the next couple of years, so that we don't have to do that. Yeah, we're planning that now. So we will go, on the, on, every May, we'll have a trustee up for a vote, because we will be doing a rotating ballot, but other than that, we don't foresee that happening.
So then would that vote for the trustee take place when we do the school vote?
Correct. So usually one year. This year, obviously, it will go with all of us, but everyone every year.
Anything else, guys?
You are looking to do this, this coming budget vote for the school on May, correct?
Yes. Our attorney has been giving your attorney's information, apparently, as far as your attorney before. And so they, you know, I'm not sure where they are in their communication process, but I did speak with him last week, and he is on top of it. So he'll be doing it soon.
Correct me if I'm wrong, or I'm not experienced in this. So on May, is the community voting for this to actually happen, or are they voting for the budget because it has already happened? What are they gonna be voting on in May?
They are voting for the budget.
The budget.
In May.
Which will be spelled out, obviously, in the proposition.
Correct. And the trustees. So that's what they'll be voting.
Okay. And like you had said, you'd get the messaging out of what it is? Okay, perfect.
And we, and we'll look to help with that messaging, try to get it in the school newsletter and things like that, too.
Okay.
I mean, I think it would help, you know, because we have Haxton, we have Haxton materials in the newsletter now that we're putting here. So I think it'd help if we get the messaging in the newsletter as well, in the school newsletter.
Well, thank you, ladies.
Great. Thank you. Did that clarify some of that?
Thank you.
I know. Everyone thinks, yeah, everyone thinks, oh, it's going on the school. Sweet! Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Porter, where'd you go? There you are.
Mr. Porter.
And Mr. Peterson.
Okay, when we were thinking about presentations for this month, one of the things I thought would be interesting for the Board here is just a snapshot into some of the things we're doing behind the scenes with our Regents exam. And I know we presented a few months ago as an admin team in our three-three testing and our Regents testing. I think we looked at, you know, a broad view, how we stack up against other GV schools, how we stack up against the state. But behind the scenes, there's a deeper dive going on, and I thought I would bring in Mr. Porter, just to give you a sense of what's going on across our department level. So I'll turn it over to Dave. Dave works as one of our co-chairs for our Science Department. So Dave, I'll turn it over, and you can talk about the process you're using for chemistry and the Science Department in general.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Scobell, Mr. Fiskus, and the Board. Thank you so much for your time this evening. A little bit about my process of what I'm doing for the scientific analysis. My kids took the Regents exam last June. Sadly, I was not here. I know I was seven and a month, seven and a half month old at home. So that took place the week before Regents has happened, pulling me away from here. Wouldn't trade it for anything. So I get numbers back from the state from BOCs after they've run my kids' Scantrons through their machine. My kids get their scores. I get an itemized list of what, how many kids answered each question with which answer. And so from there, I can see what percentage of my kids got those, each question, all eighty-five questions, correct or incorrect, and what they thought might be the right answer moving on from there. So I established like a floor level for my kids. I probably set the bar a little bit too high for myself, but I said sixty-five percent is by floor. I want to know if sixty-five percent of my kids got these questions right or less. If less than sixty-five got it right, that's a red flag for me. I'm not doing well enough by myself. But then I also took a look at the top end. New York State finds mastery level of learning at eighty-five percent. So I look at that high-end data as well. What percentage of my kids do I have questions that eighty-five percent or more of my kids got correct on this exam as well? Because basically, looking at the low ends, looking at the high ends, we want to find out what's going well and what we can improve on. And then identify which units and standard those questions are associated with. I'm a nerd. I know. I teach chemistry. I know. So I made spreadsheets, right? So this is a sample of the data that I've looked through, looking down the left-hand column. That's a question number assigned by the state. I have gone through and assigned a unit that goes with each question. In my teachings, the first three questions come from my atomic structure unit. That's where they are. The topic within that unit is the next category over. The numbers listed there, so in question number one, one kid thought it was choice number one. Twenty kids thought it was choice number two. One student thought it was choice three. Zero kids thought it was choice four. Option two is highlighted there. Option two is the right answer. So twenty out of twenty-two students picked the correct answer, which translates to ninety-one percent. If we follow over to the right-hand column, almost right-hand column, ninety-one percent of my students got this question right. That's above my eighty-five percent mark, which I love to see. Automatically turns green. That's the formatting behind the scenes. And then the reference table. Was this question able to be answered using the reference table or not? And then was this question related to math skills or not? So it really helps me identify where my students' strengths are and where their weaknesses were, which in turn relates back to me. How strongly did I teach these units? Could I have done something a little bit better? Or did I do a pretty good job? So then after going through all eighty-five questions, having them sorted, here are my thirteen units throughout the year with the number of questions assigned on the test that belong to that unit. The percentage of the exam that that unit covers, and again, break down question by question. Within this unit, the acid-base unit, AB at the very top of that dark red, there are seven questions. It makes up eight percent of the exam. Two of those seven questions, my kids scored eighty-five percent or higher. Eighty-five percent of my kids answered those right. Seventy-one percent was sixty-five percent or higher, twenty-nine percent under sixty-five. To me, that's a pretty strong unit. Out of seven questions, seventy percent of the time, my kids are getting this right, right? So then looking down, obviously, there are some units, the atomic structure unit, the bonding unit, where under sixty-five, that red category, those are units I need to improve on. And at the bottom, I broke it down, the test had broken down into multiple choice and free response questions. So is there a difference in my students', how they perform on a multiple guess question or something where they need to construct or answer themselves? And my data says, oh, there is multiple choice question. My kids get those right sixty-four percent of the time, where the free response, they get them right forty-nine percent of the time. Fifty-fifty, pretty good, but a hair on the low side for me. So Matt posed those department chairs to pose to our departments some questions, and I just picked four of them. I think Matt gave us eight or nine to look at. I just picked four that spoke to me while preparing for tonight. So what stands out as I look at this item analysis? First off, there are a lot of units that my students do well, and I love it. And then after digging a little deeper, after poring over these spreadsheets and poring over the data, there are some inconsistencies. So atomic structure unit, there are seven questions where three of the, one concept shows up in three of those seven questions. Two of those questions end up in that plus eighty-five category, and the third question ends up in that under sixty-five category. Would I say my students know that content? Absolutely. Absolutely they do. So is one question gonna make or break what we're doing here? Maybe, maybe not, but I can tell you those other two questions were a hundred percent got it right and ninety-one percent got it right. I'll take those numbers, two out of three. The next question we're looking at, what stands out to you as you look at the exam in regard to skills or knowledge students are being assessed on and what standards show up most frequently? If I take a look at the percentage of the exam based on the units I teach, it's a pretty even spread across the board. Chemistry is a tough subject that requires varying skills and knowledge, and most of the questions are standalone topics because of the breadth rather than the depth of knowledge needed. Chemistry is a huge, huge topic, and we're asking these kids to know a little bit of everything. So as we look through, if we were to look through the topics of everything on here, not many of those topics repeat. There's almost eighty-five standalone questions. So yeah, maybe chemical properties on number nine, oh, I did really well. A hundred percent of my kids got that one right. Oh, great. But that might be the only question that's on there that talks about chemical properties. So it's tough to say like, well, did I do well or did I not do well? There's a little give and take there as it goes with that. So, the, wrong way. Definitely wrong way. All right. So based on what you discover, is there a need to review your lessons? Is there a need to adjust what you teach and how much time you spend on each specific unit? There's always a need to review the lessons. There's always a need to revamp what you do. Teaching the same thing even third period to fourth period, I'm gonna change what I do. I'm gonna change the analogy that I use with my kids, and it might stick better. Of course, there's need year after year to go back and review what I'm doing and how I teach it. And I know we like results, and I might be shooting out the door for saying this. I know we like results. However, I know when I'm teaching my kids at Regents chemistry, I'm preparing them for future coursework when they take my class next year in AP Chemistry. I know I'm setting a foundation of problem-solving skills and conceptual thinking that's going to make them better scientists and prepare them for future coursework at the college level, when they want to take physics with Mrs. Rushlow or go back to take AP Bio with Mr. Lupe. And they're gonna take those skills to their other courses as well, and it's gonna benefit us as a district, raising that level, and it's going to raise our community as well on top of that. So yeah, the numbers are good. I'll argue they're pretty good, but there's definitely need for improvement. My last question, what actions should we take to achieve our goal on raising student achievement on the Regents exam? And here's where the big part comes in. I look at those numbers on those, these five units, I really struggled with atomic structure and bonding. And for me, those, I know those units are two of the first four units I teach. Before Thanksgiving rolls around, I'm done with the bonding unit. So this year, I've already started to prepare for this. I've already started, we're eight weeks into Regents review. Mr. Porter, when we have it through the school year, you've already reviewed for eight weeks? Yeah, I know. Because if we reviewed now for eight weeks, by the time June rolls around, they're gonna take this test. They've seen these questions now from September, October, every week for the next twenty weeks. It's gonna be less push the day before the exam to go back to October in our heads and try to make up for it. There are some extra labs that I've tucked into the year this year that really concrete and really ground the kids into the learning in these weaker units that I have. And talking about the multiple choice versus the free response, and one of our faculty meetings, Matt has encouraged us to include some writing implementation into our classroom. So there are a few different writing techniques, and I have page in class. We have our questions of the week, and every single one of those is a free response type question, where I provide them a sentence stem, and they have to finish the sentence three times: because, but, and so. So it trains their mind to think a little bit outside the box, that I need to complete the sentence using standard rules of English writing. So we're tight and a little cross-curricular there. But also free response, can I construct an answer that is one factual and two, has good grammar, punctuation, capitalization, the whole nine yards? And so with all this rolled into one, we're hoping to see some improved numbers here. And this is, this process is what the Science Department's doing. I'm sure the Social Science Department is doing something similar through their item analysis. Same thing for English, same thing for history. Any questions?
You are a brave man.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell you that right now. To put your results up in front of the whole world to see, I give you a heck of a lot of credit for that. In my mind, this is what I vision. This is true item analysis. When I see the green up there, it's clear where you're really being successful, and the red, you know, is where you need, you know, more work, and then that's gonna drive your instruction. This is, this is really well laid out. It's exactly what I've been kind of talking about. It's what I love, love, love to see. Everything that you're doing is informed by this data. And I know it changes from group to group, from year to year.
Yeah.
But you could develop trends, and where, you know, where have you been successful in the past, where you need to go in the future. Have you ever been compared, Dave, where you are within the region? Sort of like where you are in a specific question within the region, like where does Oakfield stand with that?
No, we have been granted information in the past.
Where we get our reports from is I work with Carol, and we have Level Zero, and there's lots of different stuff you can pull. So we kind of started small, like pulling it by standard. There was one teacher who wanted it by student, but I do get the sense that the sky is the limit on what we can pull. And I can't say that I've attempted to pull that report yet, or even if it exists. But there's a lot we can do with that data. Back when I was in the classroom, we'd have to take old Regents exams and do this on our own. Now we can just kind of punch it in what we want, and it spits the reports out for us. So I think the sky is the limit, and this is really just a tip of the iceberg, because we just started it this year, and Dave is doing an exemplary job at it, as you can tell.
This is awesome, Dan. This is great. And I will say, chemistry is challenging. I had to take it twice. So I wish I had you. Mr. Porter was a great man, but I just wasn't great, too. This is, this is, I really, thank you. There's a lot of work.
Thank you.
I have to echo what Justin's saying. One question I have for you, and as a former math teacher, you know, way back when, we kind of did something not as involved as this. But if you could go back to your slide where you had the kids picking what they chose, I thought one thing that stood out to me was, let's take, for example, question maybe, question ten. You notice that, you know, ten kids chose question or answer number three, and nine kids chose question four. Obviously, question or answer four was the right answer. Do you ever go back as just for your own benefit and say, why did answer number three catch half my class? And compare those two answers, and then say to yourself, all right, you know, next year, when I go ahead and cover this, you know, how far away are those answers? What tripped up the kids? And, you know?
Right. I personally have not, with eighty-five questions to go through, that's a lot of, that's a lot of back-end work. But you're right, that would be something to look at. Like, question five, I don't even look at that one. They all got that one right.
Right.
But you're right, question ten, half my kids picked an incorrect answer.
Right. Or a question where, you know, fifteen out of the twenty-two had it wrong, and they all picked the same answer.
Right.
You go back and say, was it the language in the question?
Was it the language in the question? Was, you know, why was this answer just popping out at them?
That it kind of caught them, because, you know, we always think in a multiple choice, you know, obviously, there's always a right answer. There's always a close second, and the other two really don't matter.
Right.
So, you know, but I think it's fantastic work in doing all of this, and it's, you know, absolutely needed. You're doing a phenomenal job, and that's why you have such great success with your kids. You're a fantastic teacher. I will tell the Board that my daughter, two years ago, was struggling with her chemistry teacher in our district, and Mr. Porter helped her out.
Safe there.
And she rocked it. And she still says, I kind of wish I went to Oakfield. I like your teachers over there. And she only, she only worked with you. So I do appreciate all of this, and that's what just makes you a great teacher here, is digging in and doing this work. So thank you.
And Dave, do you do this all, do you do this on your, like, your own completely?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, and that's what makes it hard. So if you're looking for trends, like if you say that the right answer is A, but sixty percent chose C, then it's hard on your own to say, well, I wonder if you had like a group of people to kind of digest each of these questions, you might be able to say, well, these are the trends we're seeing based on language, and we have to go back and attack language in this, in this standard or whatever.
And I mean, it would be time-consuming upfront, but like, it wouldn't hurt, like, it wouldn't be impossible to add an extra column of like, oh, like, why is this one wrong? Just like for the ones that?
Extremely time-consuming.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. So like if you got like number ten, like is it, is it a word thing? Is it a, when they got it down, was it fifty-fifty guess? Is it a math question where they made a math mistake? Or, you know, absolutely, but time is the essence.
Well, and you could go, you could look at the high-low threshold as well. So if, even if you get one that has like a hundred percent accuracy or above eighty-five because you said that was your bar, like looking at what teaching methods did you use? I mean, did something stand out from that lesson that really grasped their attention? And they were able to retain that information? But then also utilizing anything below that sixty-five to differentiate instruction next year based on, you know, who got it and who didn't. But I also love that you said that continuity and flow. You're taking this data, you're analyzing it, you're using it to drive instruction, but you're also using it to compare because you're getting those same kids the next year, right?
Some of them will get it for AP next year. Normally, students that take Regent's, about a quarter of them take AP the following year.
Gotcha.
What's curious like...
What I love about this too is the natural link between doing this kind of work and then what you've already done with the curriculum work and how you prioritize this standard versus that standard.
Right.
And how that can change over time. So I think the two things build off each other rather nicely.
The curious thing though too is if you were to look at gap, you know, gap from Oakfield to Regent, you might say, oh, my gosh. We may have got forty-one on classifying matter, but the rest of the region got twenty.
Right.
We exceeded that region. This was a hard question.
Right.
And then, you know, what is there? So it's, it's, it's not something to just to blow by. It is, it's relevant to look at as well because you may be, you may be exceeding or we might be below the region. And we might tap somebody on the shoulder and say, well, what are you doing differently?
Yeah.
You look at like question thirteen where it's sort of scattered. Like is that just a bad question?
Right.
You know, poorly written question on that test. You know, did everybody know it? You know, was it all over the board too, you know? And then, you know, not to take anything, any pressure off of you, but maybe that ain't your fault. It's just a bad written, you know, I don't know. I look at things like that too where...
And like for me personally, like knowing the exam and knowing what Table F is, I know Table F is just a hard reference table to read. It's confusing, it's wordy, it's jumbled.
Yep.
It's hard for me, it's hard for the kid. I know, I know it's a hard table to read. So for me, that, that is enough, that's a hard question. They show up.
Yeah, no, this is great.
Amazing. Assessing students and using the data to drive instruction. It's, you know, it's, that is a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Back anytime. And please, keep up the good work. Thanks so much. And thanks to Mr. Peterson. It's great.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'm off to get home to bed time.
For you and the baby. All right, Christine.
Forward, backward, zero.
Is that easier?
I think I got the answer.
Okay, are you guys all ready for your first pass?
Oh, yeah.
Here we go.
Let's go.
Let the season begin.
We're ready.
Is the community ready?
Let's go.
Rob says there's five thousand people watching. I'm joking.
No, no pressure. I do have to say, this is what, my third season now, so...
Grizzled.
Right? Third season, so like my heart isn't racing like it was the first one.
You got this.
That's a plus, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start off like we usually do, talking about priorities. Mr. Fiskus, do you, can you see them?
Yeah, I can, I can run through that. So obviously, we have priorities as an admin team, as, as separate buildings, but as a complete district. And our instructional priorities is obviously the support of literacy and math initiatives. Support students with our MTSS programs. Obviously, they are in full swing at both the ES and the middle high school. We continue to provide our students, you know, academic behavior and the social emotional learning. We wanna continue with the middle high school after-school tutoring and the Saturday morning academic support. I know Mr. Peterson has presented on the statistics with just his program up here at the middle high school. And it is just speaking volumes to supporting students, you know, and more so supporting them instead of, you know, having consequences for them. And the kids are finally catching on. The kids are taking advantage of it. And when Mr. Peterson tells me that, you know, fifteen kids showed up at Saturday morning tutoring when only two were required to be there, is just phenomenal. And the kids, the kids are buying into it, which is, which is, you know, so important. And obviously, at the elementary school, I know Lynn earlier presented on her Adventure Academy. And the teachers had talked about kids having fun, but they're learning. And we wanna continue that. Those are the priorities that we wanna continue for our kids to learn, but also to have fun here. So when we sit down and we talk about what do our buildings need? What do we want? These are our top priorities is to, you know, obviously focus in on the instructional aspect of, of our students. The safety and security is always a top priority. We do have some security enhancements that we are currently working on and that we will also add to our programs here. We do have a lockdown integration system now where anytime a lockdown is initiated here in the district, we will have an automatic call to nine-one-one in which they will notify what building it is in, what section of the building is it in. We do, and I don't wanna get too much into it to, you know, for obviously security reasons, but we have a different system within the buildings as far as the phone systems, the alert systems, the PA systems. And that stuff is really all coming together. Christine, we'll talk about the additional extra cameras that we have as part of a system that we are employing here. Some of this is part of an aidable program where we can purchase new cameras to replace some of the old ones. Some of the old ones are still working, but maybe they don't rotate three-hundred-and-sixty degrees. We do have some blind spots in the district, outside and inside, that we are purchasing additional cameras so we can cover those areas. One of the things that was recommended to us is we are also gonna get some pole-mounted license plate reader cameras throughout the campus. While our outdoor cameras obviously can see cars and incidents happening, sometimes when you try to zoom in, the cameras then lose their clarity. And, you know, there's times where we've wanted to see, you know, some car went off the road and gee whiz, what's the license plate? And by the time you try to zoom in, you lose it. These cameras will be specifically placed that it'll plate read every car that enters and leaves the district. And again, most of this is aided through the New York Safe Act. So again, we're gonna upgrade our, our security systems. And Christine's got a little more detail on, on the cost of that. Obviously, fiscally, and this is more so for, you know, the district taxpayers, we are always looking to maintain appropriate level of staffing. We do have a couple retirements at the end of the year that actually are on the board agenda. We've had a couple retirements throughout this year. Anytime that happens, the admin team sits down to make sure that we have the appropriate level of staffing. We obviously wanna maintain all of our educational programs and extracurricular activities, if not, expand them. And I think we've done that over the last few years. You know, as an example, the indoor winter track. And now this year, we've added the modified. So we're always looking to maintain or expand our activities here. We wanna continue our transportation vehicle replacement plan that ensures the highest level of safety for students. Christine will talk about that as far as bus replacements. We also wanna make sure that we support our short and long-term district initiatives. We do have a capital project that, a new capital project that we presented to the Board of Education next month as part of our long-range facilities plan. We did create a facilities committee that had eighteen members that consisted of teachers, community members, parents, board members, administrators, our athletic director, and obviously our architects as far as what do we need to do to make this campus top-notch by twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven, and twenty-thirty? And doing that in such a fiscally responsible way that there's, you know, little to no tax impact on our taxpayers. And then obviously, we talk to our students and staff because they're on the front lines of what are their technology needs? You know, Rob can tell you that technology tomorrow is different than today. And kudos to Rob for being the best in, in the business for this district because I think we are the top as far as technology goes. Certainly showed, you know, through COVID that, you know, that was not a hurdle that we really had to jump because we were already there. But again, getting support and feedback from students and staff on, on what they need to do their job.
Now we start talking about the money. So built into the budget that you're gonna see, the, the bottom-line budget, here are some assumptions that we, we took in building that. You know, obviously, the salaries are as per the employment contracts. These OATA, CSEA, and OAAA, they expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. So those are under negotiations. So they'll be, you know, obviously, we tried to factor in what we think we might end up with there. You know, it's kinda unknown at this point in time, but we tried to do an estimate. And I did budget four percent increases in, in salaries. Obviously, like John alluded to, we always review staffing levels, both instructional and non-instruction. Whenever there's a change, there's always an opportunity to, to reevaluate our needs. Benefits, I, we budgeted health insurance at ten percent increase. The TRS, TRS rate goes down slightly. And our ERS, ERS rate goes, goes up slightly. So there's that. Equipment, our buses, next year, we wanna continue with replacing the two larger buses. The price went up significantly this year. We usually budget two-ninety. It's gonna be three-fifty is the quote that we got. One of the things we're gonna try to do to mitigate that is on the revenue side of our budget, instead of trading in the buses and getting what they'll give us for it, we're actually gonna put them on the auction block and, and we feel that we'll get a better return on our money for that. So we're gonna take a different approach to it. You know, we typically, these aren't like a, a big significant increase to budgets, but just wanted to point them out. We always budget for equipment replacement in our buildings and grounds department as well. One of their needs this year is an automated floor machine. We want to do zero-turn mower and our gator blew up this year. So we wanna replace the gator, but we wanna replace it with one that has a cab and a plow on it. So we have another, we can put another butt in the seat attacking snowstorms and putting down salt on the campus, keeping us safe. So that will make it a little more useful to us year-round, not just in, in fair weather. So. John talked about the security project that is on the, the plate for next year. It was a team effort between Jordan Alejandro, J.C. Montroy, Jordan Jaeger, our buildings and grounds director. Rob was involved in that. I think Matt was involved in it. And basically, what that does is it involves a lockdown integration system and it also increases camera coverage on the campus. The gross cost of that project is a hundred and four thousand, but we've identified in, in drilling down through the quotes that we received that we can do the in-house cabling, cabling in-house, and that would save us about twelve-five. The net cost then on the, in this budget is ninety-two. But we will get New York Safe Act aid. We would receive that in subsequent years. It's basically building aid, but it doesn't factor into that maximum cost allowance. But it's a separate bucket. So the net cost to the district for a project like this is thirty-five-seven-eighty. Capital projects, as you can see out front, I don't know if you got a chance to take a look at the hive being drawn on the floor out in the, in the foyer, but that's coming to an end. We've submitted our final cost reports in December for that. And we have a remaining hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-thirteen for that. And our plan is to do a phase-two project with it and combine it with our annual capital outlay projects that we do. We do a hundred every year. We've budgeted it consistently. They've been very good for the district. Historically, we got the, most recently, the rear bus loop and athletic entrances, which looked really nice with the lighting and it's a nice entrance way now. This year is the elementary school gym bleachers and dividers. We feel that, I think that's getting done in April and May. That'll be complete. So the plan next year is to do a HVAC project work here at the high school. We always say and flooring because if there's a little bit left at the end, you can probably do four classrooms of carpeting with that new carpet and replace it for twenty K. And you can, you know, you get eight on it. So we try and...
So you can couple that one-twenty-four with a hundred thousand?
Absolutely. Yep, you can do them, you can do them as one project. So if that works out great, because then you can get the bigger things like the HVAC. So the areas that are being looked at is the fitness center was one of the areas that got pulled out of the capital project and the CSE offices that are at the end of the wing that got pulled out of the project as well. So those are the areas that we're looking at. I don't know if we can do both, but we're gonna work with the architects to see what we can get, get accomplished with. One thing I did build into the, into the project and is a playground replacement. That's another thing that got pulled out of the capital project. The replacement of the one that we pulled out at the elementary school. Cost estimates that we're hearing from architects. And I've reached out to all the business administrator colleagues that I, I could get a response from. And, you know, cost estimates are coming about between three and three-fifty. And these are projects that were done a little while ago. So I did put it at the three-fifty. So to make sure we were, I didn't go on the low end or went on the high end. There's so many options out there. I don't think that, you know, it's something that, I think it's something better to be looked at from maybe a playground committee to get feedback from the community, students, maybe, board members, maybe teachers, principals, different, different areas. So a couple of funding options I talked about with our architect. And I, this is where I kinda leaned more towards the general fund budget. And you'll kinda see that too as we go. You know, to make it an aidable project for building aid purposes, two things. It cuts into the maximum cost allowance in this. So for those who know, like who have been on the facilities committee and know how that works, we don't want to cut into our incidental cost allowances. So the other piece of it is to be able to do that. As a project, we would have to do work inside of a building with it to make it an aidable project. So it was, it was a little too complicated to do that given the fact that we already have a capital project that we're putting before the voters that came out of the last facilities committee. I felt that, let's take a stab at it with our, our general fund budget and we'll talk about it after first pass. One of the things that makes it kinda possible is, remember last year, we budgeted to, we have a reduction in our budget. So we, last year, we spent an extra eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in principal payments towards our BAN and financing. And we did that, how that was possible was that we used our debt service reserve that was, had been built up. And that's the only thing you can use a debt service reserve for. So we took the opportunity to reduce that debt, which is good, especially going into an interest-increasing environment. So next year, we won't have as high of debt principal payments. Interest goes up a little bit just because of the, we're bonding. And we'll get into a cycle on that. But our debt service still remains about thirteen percent of our budget. And it's mostly aidable through building aid. So you'll see we've got, the proposed budget is three-million-one-forty for our debt service. We're gonna get about three-million-one-forty in, in building aid. At this point in time, I'm proposing, I'm projecting, again, that includes the, the projects that we're talking about, the security project, doing a playground, and the other, the other regular increases that we have, a preliminary budget of twenty-four-oh-fifty-seven-two-hundred, which represents a four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar increase from the prior year's budget with an increase of one-point-nine-eight percent. We've talked about expenses. Let's talk about the revenue side of the budget. CPIU for, and calculations for the tax cap. Because CPIU is eight percent, we are still, because of the tax cap legislation, capped at two percent. So in, and you've got, you've all seen it here, at board members at least, the tax cap calculation's pretty complicated. You know, built off of the prior year's tax levy as a base.
Christine, what was CPIU again? What does that stand for?
You had to ask me that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a...
Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price Index, but I don't know what U stands for. I don't know.
Just use CPI.
Right, CPI. We'll take the U off, CPI, Consumer Price Index. So the allowable growth factor is only, you know, 2%. So based on that complicated calculation, our maximum increase would be 3.9%, which would be $213,000 with a $5.6 million tax levy. That is just the cap. I, I did not factor in an increase when I was doing my, when I was doing my revenue. I just want you to know that is what we could do.
Okay.
Okay? So comparison of that to last year, last year, our cap was 1.97. We went out for 1.1 and brought in, you know, $59,000. This year, our cap is 3.9, what it would bring in and we just, you know, we need to make that decision going forward. Here's that chart again, very similar, you've seen it in the past. The blue line is the allowable levy, the yellow line is where we've gone to on average over the last, since the tax cap legislation went into place, I think we're at 0.89%. If we go at zero this, this year, it would be 0.89% on average over the last, since, well, 10 years now.
Say that one more time, please, Christine. If we go at zero, what?
If you go at zero, you've only, on average, over the course of the tax cap legislation.
Point eight three.
Point eight, yeah, it's like 0.89.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per year, not all the time.
Yeah, just average. Yep. Next year's revenue for pilots, this is, we don't have any new pilots coming on, so it's, that is a, there's no increase there. We're on year seven of 15 for Empire Pipeline, three of 15 for Bright Oak Solar. It'll be year two of the Plug Power Pilot, but there are potential new pilots on the horizon, 2024, 25 and beyond. Cedar Solar probably being the, the one that'll come on soonest. I know they're, are they having, or no, that's Atlas, Empire Vacuum, they're having a public hearing next week on that. That's in the STAM project. What is new next year is the first year of the Education Investment Agreement or Education Contribution Agreement. For 357,000, it is not pilot revenue. It is that separate agreement with Plug Power. That first payment comes on next year. So overall, look at our revenue at this point in time. Understand that state aid, I do not have a January state aid run yet at this point in time. Usually, we get something at the end of the month. I haven't seen anything yet. So this is based on some preliminary numbers that we received back in November from, from the state. So I'm projecting that to be a 346,000 increase. I'm projecting a flat property tax. Unclassified revenue, let me, there's a bunch of stuff that goes into that. The biggest piece of that is that 357,000 for the Education Contribution Agreement. There's also included in that is the 250,000 that we have to budget revenue for the tuition for the 611 program. We did not budget that last year. We did do a budget amendment after the fact because we didn't know in April, when we were doing the budget, that we were going to do this. We didn't add that program until the summer. So those are the two big drivers for that. Also, selling the buses versus trading them in increased that line as well. Fund balance, appropriating fund balance is relatively flat to prior year. There is a big swing in what we're doing with the reserves. We didn't, that last year, we used the debt service reserve. This year, we're not using a reserve. So when you add that up, I'm showing 24,057,200 with our proposed revenue and with a 467,000,594 increase and 1.98% change. If you recognize some numbers, you're going to see that we have a balanced budget. Okay? Next steps, next month, you're going to get a presentation. Obviously, we did this last year as well. The instructional side of the house will present. I will hopefully have a tighter number on state aid and provide any other adjustments or updates based on feedback from you guys. And then we move on from there. Tax cap, the tax levy limit calculation is submitted for the first pass in March and then we follow on through to our budget vote. I know it's a lot of information. It's a good presentation. Thank you.
So you talked about staffing and you were saying appropriate, was that? So what changes or assumptions? I know we're talking about like the deputy treasurer position, is that assumed to be in?
That is.
Anything else assumed to be out or in in terms of the retirements or?
The only thing that we're currently discussing, we do have Rosie's position down at the elementary, she is retiring. We're looking at possibly kind of reclassifying that position for, for our needs. We haven't come up with a proposal yet, but there's been some discussions in trying to reorganize what can we make more of this? Where are our needs? Where are our shortcomings type of things? The retirement that you'll have on the board agenda, Pat Trender, who is a middle school math teacher, we need to replace her. So other than I think Lynn's secretary down at the elementary and, you know, the deputy treasurer, we don't feel the need that we need to add any positions or not replace any positions. I think we're pretty, pretty good at this point. Our enrollment seems to be going a tick upwards, but nothing crazy, you know? Handful of kids here and there. But, you know, class sizes, I don't think we have an issue with any section at the elementary. If anything, you may have a couple of classes here and there that are a little high at the high school just because of, you know, requests and things like that. The middle school, I think the classes and sections are fine. Doesn't look like we need to add, add any classes or sections there. So I think we're, I think we're pretty good.
The positions we added with the COVID funding, is there, is there one more year of funding?
Yes.
Is it two positions? What was it? Was it math and literacy?
So there was math, lit, social worker and, I'm looking at Lynn because she always.
I believe that's it.
I think that was it.
So it's three. And there's one more year of funding for that or what is that?
So we got one more year of funding of that. Or this, this, this year will be the last year of that. So we, we, you know, we need to start thinking about how we, you know, either bring that back in. Obviously, net, you know, we always have that education contribution and the head, in my head, I always think like 100K a person we've added benefits and this and that, you know, just rounding, very much just rounding. You know, we could easily absorb that, that first year and then, you know, just kind of ramp up a little bit. I did budget a little extra in the revenue or in the salary lines as a cushion. We need to ramp up to that. I don't want it to be a big hit, all of a sudden, boom, it's gone. I need $300,000 to keep these people. That's not, doesn't make sense. So, you know, so there is a little bit, you know, when I say 4%, it's more than 4%. It's, you know, but it's.
And in this proposed budget, there's 350,000 for playground that you won't have to worry about the final year.
So it'll help that first year cushioning, but I, you know, I really, I really think that, you know, you know, and we'll also, I think, at that point in time, have another pilot coming on. Problem I worry about with the pilots is the downward pressure on the tax cap. What happens when you get yourself into a negative tax cap situation and having to have a super majority? Our voters have been super supportive of, of the district and I think we're, I think that's indicative that we're doing some really good things here at Oakfield. I don't see that as a huge hurdle for us, but it depends on that swing and what that looks like and the climate. You never know with economy, you know, how things can change. So I just caution us on that as well, so.
The 23, 24 budgets of last year of the federal funds, right?
Of the federal funds.
Okay.
So the things to factor in as well, do, that it's paying, it's also paying for is these after-school programs, the Saturday academic support. Those are also things that, you know, again, conversation that we have this next year and talk about, you know, what, what do we continue? What do we, what do we, you know, make sure that we build into the budget in 24, 25 to absorb those things?
So you said flat enrollment for like the incoming kindergarten class? What, so what is our kindergarten class?
This is the smallest current kindergarten class we've had in a while, to be honest with you.
This one is small, you said?
My, this current year. But next year, I think it will go back up a bit because I am full with my E P K classes. I have two sections of 18, they're full. We have Honey on a Waitlist still. I don't foresee that person will get in this year. So we're already bigger than we are last year at this time. The other point that I would like to also add is that for the first time since my tenure here, we are fully funded in E P K grants, which allowed us to take four positions out of our general fund that we've never been able to fully fund. We've always used part of and we've always been drawing a ton of money from our general fund and that's something Christine and I work on closely.
Yeah, and that provided some relief, you know, what, we went from 111,000 that was funding that program to 341 and that about funds it and with some, a little bit of opportunity from some extra activities.
It allows for those four positions to still have extras. So we're enhancing some courtyard spaces with some play activity stuff for our littles and we're able to use, you know, we fully funded all of their field trips this year, which I've never been able to do. So we're able to still provide the classrooms and the kids a lot of support, but we're able to take some of that pressure off the general fund for the first time.
There is the expectation that will continue?
Yeah, there's a big push right now in New York State to continue to expand. I'm sure Maria probably has way more knowledge on this than I do because I don't have room for three-year-olds, so I don't really pay attention to that funding, but they are pushing funding out to expand three-year-old programs, four-year-old programs, full day versus half day. You know, early intervention is a huge push right now, especially after COVID. So I don't foresee that that funding is going to go away anytime soon.
It seemed like through COVID, there's a lot of threats to funding and if anything, we've emerged to the politicians giving behind funding. Is that fair to say?
It is. Very much so. And meals is a huge push right now for breakfast and lunch and to add additional funding for that as well.
And that's a state push?
Yeah, federally and federal. Well, everyone's pushing, yeah. And I think once you see that expansion funding come through and if there is opportunity for a 3PK, even if it's not on site, even if it's with a CBO offsite, that's additional funding as well. But like Lynn said, there's, there's money coming in.
Some schools already went fully funding their lunch programs on their own without having the state or federal support.
And we can do that. You can still. We can still apply for that for the rest of this year and we do have the funds in the capital or in the cafeteria fund for that.
Would that be different than C A C F P funding?
C E P or C A C F P? It is different than C A C F P.
Right.
It's, so it's a waiver that allows you to use the fund balance because a lot of districts, remember when we talk about all that increased reimbursement that we received due to the pandemic? They increased our rates and providing, while we provided free meals the last two years, our reimbursements from the states was higher, our fund balance in our cafeteria fund has come, has come higher. We've been very conservative, Mary's, Mary's very conservative in her spending, but, because she is concerned and is very much in tune with the price increases that she's seeing. So, but we do have that and we do need to spend that down. For districts that have the funding capabilities in the cafeteria fund, we can apply for a waiver and provide free meals for the rest of the school year if we want to do that. I have Mary looking into it because we do have an excess fund balance that we do need to spend out and do need to submit a plan to the state.
Right, well, that, that's what we were audit against, right?
Correct. Correct, and you're only supposed to have three months expenditures in fund balance and we exceed that.
Yeah, that was.
By almost three times.
I don't think you're alone, no?
Huh? No, we're not alone. No, we're not alone and that's why other districts have done it, is they're able to do it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, that's something if we want to move forward with Mary's looking into that application, if we can get approved, doesn't mean we implement it, but at least getting us approved to be able to do that if we want to. So.
Any other questions?
If I can just say one thing to give kudos to Christine, you know, in my discussions with her, and it is only January, so there's a few months to kind of polish this up. You know, I, we had, we had talked and I had, you know, kind of mentioned, you know, just a couple of limitations. I had said that, please understand that, you know, in these, in these times, I believe the board and the community are looking at a 0% tax increase. And now you throw in some playgrounds and throw in some extra equipment and do all this and, you know, moving things around, see how, see how well you can make it work and see where we're at. And this is what she brought to us. So kudos to you because right now, you know, we seem to have a very fiscally responsible, balanced budget with no gap that's at a current 0% and, you know, includes a playground, but I know the community has been, and it's always been on our radar when this capital project was completed, is to add that back in. And we had discussed, you know, how are we going to fund for this? How are we going to support this? And you trunched some really good numbers and, you know, we've been sitting and, you know, we sat for hours today just to kind of review what we've had and very, very happy with the initial budget plan.
I, I was very happy that it shook out the lid, too.
And, and I want to include the administrators and the department chair and everybody that takes, you know, a part in all this because she's, you know, sit down with all the departments and the principals and, you know, they all have their say and needs and wants and, you know, it's, it's, it's great that, you know, this team comes together and they go down and talk to their department leaders and grade level chairs about what their wants are. So really, everybody comes together and this is, this is the final result and I think it's fantastic.
There's been a couple articles in Batavia and Batavia's city budget. I don't know if anybody else reads those, but it looks like they're having to go over their tax cap, or they're proposing to go over their tax cap again. And so they talk a lot about the inflationary pressures inside their budget. So even if it's out there, it seems like this is coming together, it'll pay though, which is great.
It'll be interesting to see when we get the state aid numbers, how that shakes out. That's my, that's my, to me, my aspect, right?
That should be coming out by next week though, right?
Should be. Last year, my state aid runs were dated January 18th because I kept looking at it like, I know I had it by now. I know I had it by now and I looked back and they're dated January 18th. And I don't have them January 24th and so we'll see, we'll see. I'm not as stressed out as I was under previous governor administration. Obviously, it was a different environment too and a lot of things have happened in the economy since then. But, you know, I, I feel with the push to fund and the promise to fund, fully fund foundation aid, which we're fully funded, but a do minimum increase for those districts that are fully funded and the talks about revamping that, that formula, I think are promising.
Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the time. Thanks for moving forward. Carla, do we have any visitor requests?
No.
Oops, I'm sorry. I've got to approve the minutes.
No, not going.
I'm sorry, so thanks for letting us know. I did approve the minutes, be it resolved at the minutes of the December 20th, 2022 regular meeting, be approved. Can I get a motion?
So move.
I get a second? Any discussion?
I'll meet up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. We're already ahead of schedule here. We know that there's no visitors. So on to the approval of warrants, be it approved or be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Treasurer's reports, be it resolved or treasurer?
Next month.
Sorry.
Next month. We'll get caught, we're going to get caught up next month.
Sorry, Christine. Thank you, Matt. Reports, Christine, I think you've, you've said your piece for the night.
Yeah, I don't think there's really much else to say. We have our new treasurer who started on Monday and Lee's official retirement date is Friday. She's going to take some time off next week, but she's going to come right back at it to help train. So, you know, with the promise of, you know, lunch on Friday, you know, so we, if anybody sees her and wants to wish her well, they can, but they'll likely see her on campus periodically, you know, helping us out, so, training Jenna, so. you know, helping us out, so, training Jenna, so, and Jenna's hit the ground running, she's already getting, uh, training with air sports, so, um, you know, she's very excited, and can't wait for you guys to meet her.
Welcome to Jenna again, and thank you, Lee, for coming back, that's really nice of you to do that. John, what do you got for us?
Sure, um, so if I could go back to, um, December's blizzard, um, we haven't met, uh, as, as, as a board and as a, as a group like this, and I did mention this in our opening day, um, Superintendent Conference Day on January second. I need to loudly thank and applaud, um, a lot of people in this district, and I'm, and I'm gonna list them off, um, and that are part of our Buildings and Grounds team and crew for what they did. We had employees here on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, um, that week afterwards, I showed up on Tuesday, um, because I myself was kind of buried at my house, and they were still moving snow, and we still had events going on that week. We had practices, we had people using our facilities, um, and the amount of snow removal, the amount of time, the amount of hard work, the dedication, um, like I said, you know, they were here on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, just trying to keep up with it. And they just kept plugging away, and they didn't say anything, they just, they just did their work. And I don't know if the board knows, but as part of the county's emergency response plan, um, we are a part of that, and, um, our school is, um, listed as a safe haven, because what happens is, is if they had, all of a sudden, there's a travel ban, or a travel advisory, or they're rooting people off, um, the ninety, they come down seventy-seven, and sometimes they come through, you know, the Village of Oakfield here, and, you know, Jordan was able to open up our campus in case, um, people needed a place to stay. I do know that, um, the Alabama Hotel and the Goose, and there were certain places where we did have stranded, you know, passengers, and, you know, people from not this area that were kind of stuck for days, and I know that the, the, the county and the villages want them in a central location, they didn't want them spread all over, but Jordan, you know, I talked to Jordan, um, several times on the phone, and he said, our school is open, and in talking to the Department Highway, um, they ended up coming over and helping us kind of, um, remove the snow, because they used our campus as, as a parking lot to tow some of these abandoned cars on the road. And so I need to thank, um, Jordan himself for the time he spent on the phone, the time he spent here, um, making sure before the storm that our generators were working, we had heat, everything was good to go. Um, he was here unlocking doors and turning lights on to make sure that if we needed this place open for people to, you know, if they lost power at the Goose, or, you know, there was an incident, um, we would be a safe place to, to be at. So Jordan, thank you, uh, John Mullen, John Kennedy, Aaron Crawford, uh, Jim Lunmark. I do want to say, you know, extra on Jim Lunmark, um, he was down at the fire hall, he's making soup, he's making dinner, he's making food for the people that were stranded, I know that they had a handful of people down there, um, so Jim, thank you for that. Uh, Justin Olson, Glenn Waldron, Joyce Buchanan, and Bree Chor, they were here, they, they were here when most of us couldn't be here. And, um, it just goes to show their dedication to this community, to this district, to our, you know, family and friends that live in this area, and our students. So, um, I just need to loudly applaud their work and their time and their efforts, and like I said, I came in Tuesday, and I ended up pulling up front here, and, and John Kennedy was out front, and I said, hey, how's it going? Um, and he just kept walking, so, uh, but, uh, it was, it was fantastic to see, and, you know, we, we were, we were ready to go. And the amount of snowfall, and then the crazy winds, um, and you know how the winds whip right through here, um, you experienced it all. They, they were here, and they were taking care of our school and our campus, and making sure, um, that, that, uh, this was a safe place, and the place was still standing after that storm, so I, I need to visually and loudly applaud.
I think a lot of times, people, um, it's easy to see what doesn't get done, you know, point out when something wasn't done, but, um, acknowledging how much they actually do, do, um, is, is important.
Right, um, I do have an email here from Tim Hens, um, he's the superintendent of the Genesee County Highway Department. I would like to just list off, um, some of his people that helped, um, and he said here, uh, there was some swapping out over the course of the storm, but most of these gentlemen helped either removing cars, opening the roads, or plowing out the lots at OACS for usage. So, um, Tim Hen, Hens, thank you, Jason Sando, Paul Sharick, Tim Kloss, Glenn Ike, Aaron Johnson, Lynn George, and Jim Stick McCaughy. McCaughy, yes, McCaughy, thank you for, um, your help, your assistance in, in, uh, working with our crews here and the district, and, uh, I think, you know, I mean, we, we came out okay, um, we did all right, and it's great to see everybody come together in, in times of, of need and emergencies like that, so I want to thank them as well. Um, just a couple of quick things also, it's January Regents Week, I'd like to wish all of our, you know, students academic success, success on their exams. The ELA was this morning, we had roughly, how many students take that?
Uh, under sixty.
Okay, um, hopefully we have a hundred percent passing rate, some of the kids that I walked by said, hey, how'd it go? And they said, hey, I think I did okay, so that's a good sign. Um, our winter sports teams have been successful, all of them have been very successful. Uh, I know Carla does a great job in, in posting up the scores and some of the stats for, for that, so, um, thank you, and, and I know the community appreciates that, so, um, we're very successful, and we can't wait to see what, you know, the sectional brings. And just a quick capital project update, the Torazo Flooring, um, has started, they've laid, uh, the base, if you want to take a look, um, I sent you, you guys a photograph of it, and I just want to let the community know that, um, finally, I found out why we, you know, color by number in elementary school. If you want to take a look out there, they have all of the hexagons laid on the floor, and they have certain numbers in certain areas of what the color's supposed to be. So, um, that was kind of a chuckle this afternoon, and then I'm like, that's why we did that. Um, but, um, as far as I know, that, that's all on schedule, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thanks, John. Michelle is in there, is that right? I'll keep her. She's got plenty of inventory there, uh, and then Connie, any updates?
Sure, actually, we have some, well, we always have great things going on, but there's definitely some great things going on, um, that I'd like to share with you. As Mr. Fiskus mentioned, one of our ongoing district priorities is literacy, and we've talked a lot about reading, and how we've shifted our reading instruction methods, we've brought on more support to support our middle school and high school students with their reading. Um, but one of the things we forget is literacy is much for them, reading, and literacy that I'm gonna talk about tonight is math, but it's, or, writing, but it's not just in writing classes, it's not just in ELA class. To be a literate writer, that has to be in math, you have to be a literate writer in social studies, a literate writer in science. Um, it looks a little different in every discipline, but it's equally as important. You heard Mr. Porter talk about how when he looked at his item analysis, wow, they're pretty rotten, those multiple choice, they're struggling with the written answers. Um, so we know that's something as a district we need to work on, we've been talking about it. If you recall, last year, I shared with you that Mrs. Book Miller in eighth grade, we're doing a little pilot, and we were bringing back writing to the middle school, she continues to do that this year. One of the books that she was using is called Writing Revolution, and it's not curriculum, it's not something we're gonna buy book, right? But you don't have to buy a curriculum set, it's more philosophy, and how do we teach writing across the content areas to strengthen all the literacy in our, or all the literary aspects with our kids. So what has been happening this year, um, we'll go back a little bit to last summer, so, we offered some PD last summer, and a few teachers were able to take advantage of it, so our first-grade team and a few other elementary teachers took a PD that Bosie's offered, they came out to Oakfield on this book called The Writing Revolution, to figure out how I can incorporate this in my classroom. Come full circle to this year, we have a couple other teachers that have been diving a little bit more deeply into it, and Mr. Peterson and Mrs. Geller both asked our reading specialist, Chris Assanti, who's kind of taken a deep dive into this, come talk to our staff, so, I don't know, a couple months ago, maybe she came and talked at the middle and high school faculty meeting, just kind of gave, gave the staff a taste of what it was, and what it could look like in math, what it could look like in science, to help our staff understand that we can support and promote writing across the content areas, and it doesn't take away from the content, it enhances it. So from that, we have more teachers interested in it, actually, our social studies department in particular asked Mrs. Assanti to meet with them specifically, because they really want to tackle that in their department. Today, Mrs. Assanti came down and did a similar thing, but on the elementary scale, and she talked to our third to fifth graders about Writing Revolution, and how they could incorporate it across the disciplines, because if you remember, our fourth and fifth grader departmentalized. So we have a math teacher, like, how is this gonna help her? We have a science slash social studies teacher, how will this help her in her classroom to support learning? Um, so Mrs. Assanti did that with them, and already there's been interest, you notice I didn't mention UPK through two. Well, what Carissa did is she tapped the first-grade team who did the summer training in The Writing Revolution, and they have been going full force at first-grade team, teaching our kids how to write, how to write in complete sentences, how to expand your sentences. They're going to start, I think, um, I visited them when they were talking this afternoon, she said this week, or within the next couple of weeks, doing, I don't know if you caught this, but you'll recognize because, but so, that Mr. Porter is doing with his high school students, they're gonna be doing this strategy with their first-grade students. So that first-grade team facilitated the discussion with UPK through second, because writing looked a little bit different at that level, and how they could start incorporating this as young as kindergarten, as young as pre-K, and what that looked like for them, and how they went through the process. So to me, this is really, really exciting news, kind of that organic growth, right? Teachers, they're curious, they want to learn more, we provide them some opportunities, the building leaders provide an opportunity for all of the staff to kind of get a taste for what it is, um, and it's really starting to grow. So that, to me, is a big win, and then that's when we, again, supporting our literacy initiative, that's right up there, because we know reading and writing are what help our students be successful in no matter what field they go to, so good stuff.
Sorry, I'm just thinking about it.
I was thinking for a question.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I'm just.
Okay, what do you want me to say about?
Nothing, I'm quiet tonight. Lynn, any updates for her?
Yes, um, a couple shout-outs, High Tech Cornets, they took first place in their last competition, and they're going to go to the Finger Lakes region, so they're very excited about traveling there. We also just had, and this is kind of a piggyback off or a shout-out for both buildings, but the spelling bee, first through eighth grade, we've never had a spelling bee competition in Oakfield history, I even went to my mother, she's a historian, and then I went to my godmother, who was our third-grade teacher for thirty-five plus years, and it's, we've never had the spelling bee competition in Oakfield. Bizarre, right?
Right.
I feel like that's crazy, so we're excited, our kids did really well, um, and we're, we're excited to see that continue. And then lastly, um, I had mentioned at the beginning of the year how we partnered with Jacasa, and Matt uses the Jacasa rep for different things in his building, my Jacasa, or they say rep, Mrs. Arroyo, is going to push into fourth grade with the assistance of Joe Jankowski and Officer Alejandra, and they're talking about, um, the curriculum is too good for violence, and then after this cycle is over, they're going to jump to fifth grade and push in and tackle, um, it's called Catch My Breath, right, am I right? And they're gonna really focus on the drug, but specifically vapes, because we know that's a, a situation that Matt and I and J.C. were always trying to be ahead of the game here, so we're excited to get, um, Mrs. Arroyo into our classrooms, and this is the first time since we partnered with Jacasa that we've had somebody pushing in on a regular basis with our fourth and fifth graders, and really providing education, so, very excited.
It's a great program.
Is it Patty? Is Patty?
Patty Arroyo, yeah, yeah.
Wow, oh, that's, that's great.
She's our Oakfield, uh, Jacasa partner.
Oh, fantastic, she's wonderful.
And she loves being in the classrooms with little, she's not intimidated by them at all, so I'm like, let's go.
That's great.
Yeah, it's good. That's it.
Thank you, John. Uh, J.C.?
I have a shout-out for youth to youth, put on our winter balls, um, on Friday and Saturday, and, um, they were fantastic, he's making me laugh, they were fantastic. The spread for the food was well done, and a shout-out also, we had Tom Walter, who retired a couple years ago, donated some, uh, lighting equipment, our, an eighth grader was able to DJ the winter ball with his Chromebook plugged into the new speakers in the gym, we learned the last dance, the little speakers they had weren't working well, and we plugged it into the wall, and we had a great stereo system for our dances, so, um, we were able to do all that in-house, and it looks like this professional DJ, he ran it right off his Chromebook, it was awesome. So we now are doing our own dances for, under the DJ, and we don't have an outside person come in. They were fantastic, the kids had a ton of fun, uh, both nights, it was great, so thank you to Mrs. Edgerton and Mrs., um,
That's great, thanks, J.C., Mr. Peterson?
Uh, I'll talk a little bit about the weekends, but I, I find myself coming in here on the weekends, in large part for the Saturday academic support, what strikes me when I come in is how vibrant it is, I've been in a few schools over the course of my career, and, you know, weekends are the weekends, the school is dead, it's a ghost town, it's the weekend, but here, you know, the, the term gets thrown around, schools are the hub of the community, and it can become cliche, but I really feel it when I come here on the weekends, I mean, at, at any given time, I came in one Sunday, the football team is in the gym. Um, our, our kids are being dropped off for Saturday academic support voluntarily, without having to be here. You know, the parents know that this is the place where they can drop them off, you know, when they need help. We have, you know, obviously, the tutoring's going out, the youth sports often are going out, the community band was here this past weekend during the Bills game, I, I don't know what the audience was for that, but nonetheless, you know, it really is the hub of the community, the Lego team is here in the weekend. It's not a ghost out here, and I think that's pretty cool, so I wanted to just kind of highlight that.
Well, thanks, yeah, thanks, go ahead.
There's a few of us with kids on travel softball that'll be, um, practicing in the gym on Sundays, and we definitely appreciate that, too. So, you know, what you say, just the hub and the things that are going on, we, we appreciate the school being open and supporting, you know, our kids with what we do here.
I was gonna say, thanks for the donuts, Nathan really liked those on Saturday. Nice enough to drop them off, so I dropped a carrot off.
Yeah, everyone wants the food. I think when COVID hit, and we, a lot of the youth groups were removed from the schools and forced to go, you know, to YMCA's or church gyms, I think that we, we really took that for granted, and we realized that during COVID, and we were anxiously waiting to get back in the schools. So it's been quite a blessing to be back in for the, the softball, the baseball, and, and right now, the youth basketball. I mean, if anybody comes down to that elementary school when we are hosting, it's, it's crazy, there's basketballs, there's food, there's so much going on. There's hundreds of peoples coming through the elementary school doors on a Saturday, and it's, it's really wonderful.
It's great to be back.
Good to be back, in the schools. Yes, the tile.
The asbestos floors?
I mean.
Thanks, man, uh, thanks for beating yourself early, too.
Yeah, thank you.
I tried to distract you the other day by honking my horn, you were so focused on your, around the donuts on the screens, I don't know where you were going, I'm sure it was really important principal stuff. Couldn't get you. Rob, how about you, my friend?
All right, well, it seems like every month they talk about, like, the Chromebooks are coming, so that's not as exciting, it is exciting, it's coming this Thursday. Um, so we have a batch of two-twenty coming, finally, our this school year's batch is arriving, uh, and they will be enrolled in, uh, eighth grade first, because of, uh, just in time for state testing, and then eleventh grade, twelfth grade after that. Um, in other news, in my less glamorous role I play is the data protection officer, I was in LaRoya this morning, uh, at their campus four, uh, in a meeting with other regional tech directors, and I have to say, our staff here when it comes to phishing emails are very good, because I was sharing our percentages of three percent, four percent, and they were like, what do you mean, we're like fifteen percent, twenty-five percent. I said, an Oakfield teacher looks at their inbox, and they sus, they're suspicious about everything, to the point where one message I send, I had to say, and just to let you know, good, I knew it was phishing, but I do let me go chicken pot pie and chicken biscuits, or something like that, that those that know it say, okay, that, that actually, nobody else would know that, so, um, thankful for our teachers, they know what to spot, we have a lot of best buy geek squad, uh, call this number to, uh, you know, cancel out of your enrollment, and they, and they know not to call the number, they, you know, they flag it appropriately, so that's a good thing. Um, and then the last thing, speaking of high tech, uh, there's a product by Itopia Labs out And then the last thing, speaking of high tech, there's a product by Itopia Labs out there that lets you run a virtual machine, where sitting at this Chromebook, which we all have eleven hundred Chromebooks in this, very high power that can run software, what if you could be running products like AutoCAD, which they now can only do in the Sean Rappatz lab, or run Adobe Creative Suite, which they can only do in Pat and Usex lab, or run Microsoft Office, which they only do in Joe Pollak's lab? What if we can take what we spend per year on those Windows machines, which is seventy, eighty, ninety dollars per machine, and instead, for less than that, buy a license so the student can then use it on their Chromebook through a virtual machine, and now twenty-four seven they have access to that software? Not just period three, when they're sitting in CAD class to use that CAD software on a specific machine. So rather than licensing machines, we're going to, we can license a portal, if you will. It's kind of like the kinds of how Netflix works, you have, you need very little bandwidth, you could do it at home on a dial-up connection practically, but the horsepower is on someone else's computer. So you're running the software that you normally run here, but you're running it in the cloud. So hopefully I didn't lose anybody with that whole piece, but the exciting part to me is that the cost to enter that is less than the cost we're paying right now to Edge Tech to have those machines sit there. And in a lab like Joe Pollak's lab, that machine sitting there just to run Microsoft Office, we could clearly do that here on a machine that, with Itopia Labs, they're giving us twenty-twenty-two Office. We're running twenty-thirteen, and we have to patch it here. If we offload that to Itopia Labs to do it, we get the latest and greatest software, they apply the patches, and they do all the heavy lifting to make sure our kid's using the latest version of the software, not the one that we bought many years ago. So there's some really great pieces to that, I'm doing a beta test now myself, then I'll move it on to Joe and some of the teachers. And that's really something that I'm kind of looking for next year, but I think it's, you know, it was great that we came across that in the demo of it so far.
That also means that kids can do their CAD homework.
That's right, do it outside of class.
Instead of, they can only do it forty minutes during the period.
Yes.
That's a paradigm shift.
I was just talking to Bruce Curtis, a teacher I used to teach with at Amherst in high school, and he's complaining to me all the time that the district Windows laptops can't run it, and the kids can't do his class or God of class. And if they can, with a tool like this, the kids are running that software on really high-powered machines that are always updated and secure, and they can do that twenty-four seven. The only catch is you just need an internet connection, and most of our families have that at home. But when they're here in class and study, however, they have access to it as well. So, we want to expand it, so it's not just where you go and do the work, we can go anywhere because we have the device in our hands.
Amazing. New, more, better, cheaper, that's what I heard, that sounds amazing.
Best in the business.
Thank you, Rob. Wendy, I think for the OATA is not feeling well, so she's out on CSCE. See Heather, is that Deb back there?
I see her.
Hey Deb, how are you?
Hey, I'm here.
Any news for us, Deb?
Not really, just looking forward to negotiations.
Those are coming, those are coming up in the next?
Those are coming out.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. And thank you, Heather.
Thank you, here.
Yes, please. And to new business, one is announcing, and new business, be resolved that item seven point two through seven point four be approved by consent agenda, a motion.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So, on the district calendar, I did have to make a late change at the board, probably didn't recognize it. So, the Genesee Valley BOSI's calendar came out at the end of last week, and we try to, for the most part, line up our spring break with BOSI's, because we don't want to be off one week and then, and then, you know, you're talking a two-week swing. I had our spring break the week of Good Friday with the following Easter Monday off. That's what we have this year, and I continued on with that for this next year's school calendar. That's not how the Genesee Valley BOSI's calendar is. They have Good Friday off, and then the week after Easter, or the week after Easter Sunday. So I just adjusted the week that we had off to include Good Friday, and then the following week after Easter. So that's the only change that I made to it, it was just a switch back of a week for, to line up with BOSI's. Other than that, everything else stayed the same.
John, it's already, everybody look at, like, when we get to Christmas, I always look at, like, it's like we're just hanging on because everybody's getting sick or whatever, like, expanding that or even like.
Well, the Christmas holiday, I will tell you that we are one of very, very few school districts that actually have the twenty-second off. Because depending on when Christmas Eve and Christmas Day fall, you know, I mean, nobody really extends that time. We could play around with that, and we have very little flexibility. You know, for example, you know, I do know that per the contract, we need the day off before Thanksgiving. So that's why we have the twenty-second off. We need to have Good Friday off. I could get a day back if I moved our spring break from the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth and actually only took five days off, not actually six. But I, I think it's a give and take, and I just, it's just, there's not many days you can play with. I mean, we don't really even have a February break. I could take the twentieth off and stick it on January second, but then you don't, it just, it's only a day here, a day there.
No, I just, I think I remember when I was in school, it was like we had two weeks during Christmas and two weeks in the spring. And then it was just like, I just feel like every year we get to the Christmas time, and it's like, everybody's sick. And it's like, I don't know, who's ever looked at?
Yeah, the only good thing about this calendar is we did have an extra day off to play with because it is a leap year, and there is February twenty-ninth, which is actually a school day in session. So we did actually have an extra day to play with, and that's why we ended up getting the twenty-second off. You know, we still have the four-day Memorial Weekend, which I know people enjoy, so really, there's not too much to play around with.
So I was a bit the opposite of that, Pete, when you had the superintendent conference day in January, I was ready to send him back to school.
Yeah, no.
I was thinking that was too many. So I looked at this, and I see you didn't have it this year, I appreciate it.
No, and that's, and that's the other piece.
There were parents dropping off that day, I drove by, and there were parents trying to.
And I'll go to the notion of strategically why and where we place our superintendent conference days. We do not, or I don't, like having superintendent conference days on Fridays. You're done by Friday after, you know, you're done by the end of the week. I'd rather have a weekend where you're just kind of relaxed, and you're walking into a new school week, and, and, you know, you're more attentive and more, you know, participating in our activities. Obviously, we take a look at the holidays, but also, the common days to have superintendent conference days, if you have one where every other district has one, and you want to bring in professional development, you want to bring in some specialists, they're probably already taken.
You have to book it early, huh?
You know, I mean, you have to, you have to book them early. And you also also want to take a look at, you know, how long the weeks are between breaks, because, you know, going four or five full weeks, it does, it does, it does wear on you. So, like I said, the three that we really get to play with, actually, I should say two, are the one that's in October and the one in March. And based upon our training that we wanted to have this past year with our staff, and the requests that we had, we decided to put, you know, add that on to the January one, so the kids had an extra day off. And that's why we had that, that training on January second. But next year, we're kind of back to normal. The October, we just made it where you kind of have, you know, the students and families have, you know, three, or sorry, two, three-day weekends. A lot of districts you'll see will have October sixth off, so it's a four-day weekend. But like I said, once again, I don't like superintendent conference days on Fridays. And if you decide that you want to bring specialists in or do something, sometimes that professional development is already, already taken, so. That's our, that's our strategy when it comes to the superintendent conference days. And I apologize for, this is bad.
I wonder why you guys are roaming around town. Usually have a good idea. I was worried.
Sometimes it does.
Lynn, when is parent-teacher conferences?
So, once you approve the instructional calendar, then I sit down and we look at our trimesters and where they end, so that the report cards are available. It's usually a December date for year first, and then in March, we have two half-days, so that we have more, like, our fourth and mid-grade teachers really have to struggle to see every family with one day, so that second day is really beneficial to them.
So those will be after-hour conferences?
They will be, yes, well, the way the seat time works kind of goes to what Pete was talking about. We have to make sure I don't have too many half-days in a week, because it'll affect negatively my seat time. So, I think it'll be like we did two years ago, where it would be the half-day early release, then the superintendent, and then another half-day, so there will be a couple weeks span between the conference days, just because if there's a superintendent day and kids are not in session, I can't then do an early release.
Okay.
Kind of mentality, does that make sense?
It does.
So those will be announced after this is all formalized.
True, okay.
And we're pretty much bound, right, like, we're bound to have one hundred and eighty-one days, right? And then, within the contract, I think it's one hundred and eighty-six days that we're asking our teachers to be here, so there's not a ton of wiggle room, right? So like, you can play with these days here and there, but other than that, it's just based on district preference, where, you know, where you want it to be.
There's not much wiggle room.
There really isn't.
You know, you have a, you have a day or two, like, mentioned for a holiday, you have the two superintendent conference days, and then it all adds up, so.
It just doesn't. Carl, I forgot where I was in the process, did we get a motion? I don't know, you're fine, Jen, I appreciate that.
Man, we have one, that one.
Man, so, yeah, good to see you. Uh, yeah, no, yeah, so you made a motion to approve the consent agenda, seven point three through seven point four. Thank you, did somebody second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, here we go. And is, there's no further discussion, Jen?
I just wanted to.
Okay, just let's go. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's the passes. The communications, Carla, do we have any communications? Discussion roundtable? Got a K-bunch equity waiver here, Jen, and?
Um, we talked, kind of briefly talked about it earlier when Jackie brought up the, or, sorry, Maria, I feel like my mom. When we brought up the free lunches, and Dan did too, about the districts that are doing that. We do have that option, we do have an excess fund balance. We, we are only allowed to have one hundred and twenty-nine, four oh three as our fund balance. We have four fifty-one, five twenty, and we exceed our fund balance by about three hundred and twenty-two. We have to submit a plan to the state on how we spend that down. Been having discussions with, with Mary, and trying to get her to spend some money out of that. And one of the ways, you know, John had mentioned that you guys had asked about, potentially, you know, other districts are doing the free lunches, why aren't we? So the waivers that were in place for the last two years that allowed us to do that are gone, those expired, those sunsetted. Now they've offered, now that the districts have this excess fund balance, they've, they've offered that, you know, you can do this other waiver, it's a new waiver. It expires June thirty of twenty twenty-three, but we could use that to fund free lunches. Now, we wouldn't be able to backdate to the beginning of the year or anything like that, obviously, people have been paying for lunches throughout the year. But going forward, the thoughts were maybe we could make this effective February first if we get an approval.
Would this be K through twelve, because UPK is already funded, correct? So it would be K through twelve?
Correct.
Lunch only, no?
Breakfast and lunch, either, either or, both.
And this alone won't be enough to?
Only about seventy thousand dollars worth.
Will you, can you lower prices if we go back to charging, or would you?
For next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could revamp that. I think, I think this year she did not increase, knowing that we had the fund balance. So, I have not looked at projections for this year, where we are standalone. But if that will add to the fund balance or reduce the fund balance, but going forward next year, yeah, they could look at. I know there's some issues with a thing called paid lunch equity that requires, might require increases, right?
I don't know, US?
Yeah, yeah, so there's a formula that she has to plug some numbers in to figure out if we have to raise our lunches. But, you know, we, we look at it at that point in time, if we don't have to, obviously, we wouldn't.
So what are you saying, so, uh, we have an access balance of three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, is what, or no?
In the, in the school lunch fund.
School lunch fund, yeah, are you suggesting that, that we could reduce costs across the board?
So my understanding was this alone wasn't going to be enough to get us to where we need to be, so the next steps, if we go back to charging, could be reduced, so it's going to be free the rest of this year.
It would be free for the rest of this year, and it's only, would only take a chunk of about seventy-two thousand off of that. So there are other options that, that Mary has offered, or we've discussed, is getting some equipment, and I don't have, I apologize, I don't have that list here, but she does have some, some options. We're struggling to get to the three hundred and twenty-two, we have to submit a plan that says we're going to spend three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars before the end of the school year.
You have to do that in one year, or you have a plan to replace that down?
It's, it's a plan to bring it down by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but the plan can cover multiple years.
No, the plan needs to be spending it down by then, doesn't mean that we're going to hit that target.
Right.
We just need to submit a plan that we're going to try to do that.
Good faith effort.
Good faith effort.
So on the board here, or on the, for the options, is we could have?
This would be one option that would get down seventy-two thousand. The other one we're exploring is, you know, she's got some equipment purchases that she wants to do. We currently don't allocate any expenditures for our cleaning and custodial, our custodial staff or our maintenance staff for the work that they do in supporting the cafeteria program. That would be, just provide some financial relief to the general fund, that would assist in using up some of that fund balances allocating one FTE, and Jordan and I talked about what that would, would be of one of our custodial staff between probably halftime, elementary halftime, high school. So, the thoughts are, we could allocate that, that's one person, salaring benefits for that one person, that would help. Equipment, we do feel that there is some increased prices that are going to cut into that as well. So, you know, we're working out that plan. But right now, for discussion right now is, do you guys want to move forward with the free lunches for the rest of this year?
Yeah, I think it's too bad that we didn't know this, I mean, yeah, we could have, potentially, with this type of money, if you're saying only seventy thousand to knock down ninety days left, which is half the school year, we could have funded the whole year.
In the budget you had for the floor cleaner for next year, is that something you could do?
Nope, there's only certain equipment that you can purchase out of the school lunch, food lunch account.
You could potentially replace, like, mixing bowl, steam jack, and caddle, things like that.
And those are some of the things that she has, she's got on the list, I don't remember what they were, but very specific. And it can't be capital-related, so for example, if she needed electrical work done in there and to wire something, that isn't covered, because that would be under capital. But putting in a new steamer, yes, putting in a new register, cash register, that would be a new serving line, that would be, so. And unfortunately for us, well, fortunately for us, unfortunately for us in this situation, you know, both of our cafeterias have recently gone, undergone remodeling, so there's really not a lot of, you know, equipment needs, so.
Can you use it to purchase food for?
Yes.
District?
Yes.
So this could go beyond breakfast and lunch, potentially, for our students while they're here?
Snacks.
Snacks, things like that.
So this could, I mean, my kids are, they never bring the snacks, so I know they're always eating Miss Telly snacks, and could this be something where the teachers are provided with snacks for the rest of the year?
More ice cream.
There might.
My kids like.
Friday ice cream.
More ice cream, more carrots.
I'd have to ask Mary if there's any other restrictions in how we disperse food.
But I see what you're saying, though.
But, yeah, but that's, that's a great thought.
And have a snack bin for the kids that really, really need it in my classroom, and it does, it does cost me.
It does, right, right.
We've already got a distribution for snacks, just right now they're donated, the school could purchase those.
But if we have that much money, then we, we could. In Batavia, now, this was something that I think it was funded, and might have been through CACFP funds, but they have, it's called a backpack program, similar to.
I think that's.
Yeah, so you purchase the. Yeah, so you purchase the food, and, and we would send it home with the kiddos that qualified or applied for that program. I think it's an income-based, and we were able to provide... Have we ever done, we used to have something like that.
We do that currently.
So what is that funded through?
It's the United Way.
Okay.
So we, it doesn't really necessarily have qualification like used to with that program. It's not as restrictive.
Okay.
It's just nice.
Very cool.
So something, too, is long weekends. There's, I don't know if we do that here at Oakfield, where, like, I know at us at Kendall, we have, like, over the, you know, if it's a three-day weekend, we, there's, you know, a list of parent, the kids that have signed up, the parents have signed up for, they would like to have an extra snack or something over the weekends. We'll bag it and put it in the kids' backpacks.
Right now, we're using the goose, and teachers will donate money for food. And we did that right before Thanksgiving and kind of loaded them up for our long durations. And you'll probably see that up to begin for Easter break.
Sure.
But right now, typically, we're relying on the goose for most of the snacks.
Even just a three-day weekend, too, is, I mean, food stability is real. Instability is real, right?
Right.
Anyway, we can offset that. It would be great. I have no, what's that more chickens?
Eggs.
Oh, eggs. Eggs are...
My chicken days are over.
Too bad. Lost opportunity.
So do I have the board's blessing that we go forward with that program and offer that? So as soon as we can get that active and she gets that approval, I will communicate that out to you guys to give you, like, effective dates and things like that, and we'll communicate.
Fair swear.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much for...
Thank you. A lot of parents are going to be very happy.
Yep.
And then the other option, the other option, or the other item on here was the deputy treasurer position in district office.
I don't know if we had any more questions about the deputy treasurer position. You did, you did not. There's more than just you. Did anybody else have any other... I am, but I'm looking down to see people on the other side. Yeah, there we go, the blue group. I'm sorry. You guys coordinated. We didn't get...
I know.
No, I guess.
Over the pool table.
I guess, right? I don't know. I, I don't know. Do we have any more questions? You've given us a ton of information. Clearly, there is a need for this position. It's budgeted in, or it's projected in our, in our budget for next year. The question is, is do we want to do this now or wait until then? I think there is a need to have it happen now.
Could they come on as a food service worker this year?
But, well, the plan was for me to use the ARPA funds for this year.
Out of the box, I think.
Yeah. ARPA funds will carry this year.
I assume we're talking about the following budget here? Is that what we're talking about?
What are we talking about, Jen?
Twenty-three, twenty-four. I put that in.
Are you talking about...
So we dedicate that to the budget or the budget?
I'd beg it part of the budget discussions.
Yeah. Okay.
That would be my take, but as you say.
No, I'm just teasing, actually. Teasing. Okay. So we'll make it part of the budget discussion and then move from there.
Okay, so we're waiting. Okay.
Okay, on to personnel. Thanks, Christine. Be it resolved that items ten point two through ten point ten be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, ten point eleven, retirement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Rosemary Youngfite effective February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we say no?
You can, but I don't know.
We've tried in the past.
Can I not approve that?
Well, I'd like to thank Rosemary, Rosie for her service, and wish her the best of luck in retirement and anything that she does after this. So thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to Patricia Trinder. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the retirement, Patricia Trinder, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Trinder, for your time here at Oakfield. Wish you the best of luck in the year and after. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to executive session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education will honor the executive session at seven fifty-five PM for the purposes of discussing a personnel matter, OATA contract negotiation, the contract of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was gonna say, it was here, like, before you...